All right, this evening's public hearing is a hearing on the superintendent's proposed employment contract. The school board encourages comments and questions related to this project by the citizens of Greater Clark. You will have three minutes for your presentation. You will be notified when you have 30 seconds left to bring your presentation to conclusion. For the sake of time, if a prior speaker has made a comment that you are going to make, it is sufficient to say I agree with Mrs. Smith rather than repeating the comment in whole. If you desire to comment, when I open the public hearing for comments, please raise your hand to speak. When recognized, come forward to the podium and state your name and address prior to your beginning comments. Ready? Okay. With this time, I'm opening the public hearing and ask those interested in making comments to raise your hand. Mr. McLaughlin.
John McLaughlin. You need addresses or anything like that? No? Okay, thank you. I've sat here for a while. Board, thank you for this opportunity. Members of the public, I'm here not to necessarily speak to the terms of the contract but to the person to be considered for the position. We at Greater Clark right now, I think, are right for the appointment of a permanent superintendent. I think it's timely for this appointment to go to someone from within the district. I think someone of the caliber of Mr. Lofner comes to us fresh from a building. He has valuable insight into what we're currently doing and what we can continue to do that will be effective and also insight into the myriad of things that we do do that are really more burdensome than beneficial. Most importantly, though, he sees things through the eyes of, or using the filter of what's best for students. I hope this board sees the opportunity it has to hire Mr. Lofner. He's a Greater Clark person. He has served in two buildings successfully and made those buildings successful. He values educators and he is very student oriented. So I would encourage you to adopt this contract and Mr. Lofner.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Anyone else that would like to speak? One at a time, please, just one, one person at a time. Mr. Felix.
Mark Felix, Jeffersonville, Indiana. I'm also GCEA president. And I would just like to say, on behalf of the teachers, I've been around this week canvassing teachers and asking them how they feel about Mr. Lofner. And I have to say that I have had nothing but positive commentary. I have not heard one single person has come to me with a negative remark about this man. That says a lot when you're talking about teachers because we tend to go negative sometimes. And this man, I think he's ready for the job, he's fit for the job. He's proven in his interim status that he is going to be a good pick, a good solid pick. And I hope, well, I just hope that you see him the same light I do and I think he'll be a good choice if you'll pick him. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to ask a question or make comments that has not already been made? I was a classroom teacher, so I can wait a long time, but I won't, I won't. All right, if no one else desires to make a comment, then I declare the public meeting. I need, if that's not on my, okay, that's all right. I need a motion to adjourn this public meeting, which was not on my script that April gave me.
I'm hoping to adjourn the public meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All those in favor of adjourned the public ending and declaring it ended, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you for those who spoke. All right, I'd like to call, I have a minute. Okay. I have really good jokes. What's the difference between, okay. I'd like to call, I need to order a roll call, show that all board members are present on the agenda. I'll tell that one later during board remarks. Pledge allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion, Board?
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Discussions or questions about the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next item, public comments on agenda meetings, there are zero. The next are goals, strategies, and subsequent achievements. And the first one is our safety plan presented by Gary Green and Chad Shank.
Good evening. I'm Chad Shank. I am the projects and safety supervisor for the district. I'd like to take a little bit of time to just thank all of those in attendance. Thank you to the board for this opportunity to present on our safety plan. And we're going to go into some specifics. Some of the details of our safety plan are confidential. They need to remain confidential simply because we don't want everyone to know all of the details of our safety plan in the public because the work that's been done is certainly labor intensive and it certainly protects all of our students. With all of the teachers in the audience, I'd like to thank them and our staff that's here. Certainly, our staff and our students, they're the first lines of defense for our safety. If they see something, they say something. They do a wonderful job of that. And obviously, our staff members will take it very seriously when they do see something or something is reported to them. They're very quick to report that, to follow the protocols. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. Guidelines on our safety plan. Our safety plan for the district and then the template that we follow for each of our respective schools is rooted in the legal requirements. Not going to go through all of the legal requirements. It's there on a link, but it's rooted in Indiana Code 511. And it essentially lays out step by step, subsection by subsection, the way that you put your district safety plan together. We have in excess of 150 pages of a district safety plan that was put together over the last two to three years. It was fully vetted with a large committee made up of administrators, individuals from the community and stakeholders. Gary Green, gentleman to my right, who has worked in a myriad of positions, including head of school safety for the Department of Education, fully vetted that and put a lot of work. I'd like to publicly thank him. Dr. Holder, Wilson Elementary School principal, also had a very heavy hand in developing that plan. We've taken that plan over the last year and we formed a template and we vetted that and put that template to work. And in the process, all of our principals followed that. And it's about a 20-page document at the school level. Again, it follows and it has legal requirements and guidelines. One of the things that I'm proud of in those plans, we have a three-dimensional map at every one of our schools. It's a floor plan. It also has on those locations every AED pool station. It has every fire alarm. It has every fire extinguisher. It also has where our emergency shut-offs are for natural gas, for all of our utilities. And it has the square footage and some other pertinent information as far as who you would need to call if we had an emergency on the utility side. So that's a very, very helpful piece as well that we've embedded in our school plan. One of the things that the state legislature has done several years ago, they put aside a pocket of money and a pool of money for school safety grants. That's a matching grant. Every year, we apply for that and we receive that every year. It's $50,000 that the state sends to us and we have a $50,000 match. That's not all of the money that we spend on school safety here in the district, but it certainly helps. One of the things that Dr. McCormick, superintendent of Public Instruction, had asked for was more funding. The state legislature passed more funding in a resolution. All school districts receive metal detector, the handheld wand detectors. And also, at the state level, they decided we were going to audit the school safety plans, the district safety plans. We went through that audit in 2018 and I'm happy to say on one of the slides, you can see that we had about half of our schools were 100% compliant, meaning that we submitted all the documentation, not just the school plan but the maps. We sent up our record-keeping for our tornado, our fire, our man-made drills, our earthquake drills. Half of our, more than half of our schools received a 100% compliance and then the other half received a 95% compliance. The 95% compliant schools, unbeknownst to us and many others in the state, in fire code, it calls for a fire drill, your very first fire drill to occur within the first 10 days of school. Unbeknownst to many of us, including me, we did not, in about half of our buildings, have that within the first 10 days of school. What we were always accustomed to was having one per month. So if you look back on our school calendar, we would have one per month, but we, in about half of our buildings, did not have that within the first 10 days of school. So that's an immediate action step. For next year, we're going to go above and beyond that minimum requirement and we're actually going to have our man-made intruder drill. We're going to have earthquake, fire, tornado within the first 10 days of school. And those drills will look different at different grade levels. They'll look a little different across different landscapes, but certainly we'll have that record-keeping. So if there's a 2019 audit, I fully anticipate 100% compliance for all of our schools. Any questions so far on the checklist and legal requirements?
On that first page, are those links hot?
Should be if you click on that. Okay, so there's the actual legal requirements from Indiana Code.
So it just goes to the second slide? Okay.
Okay, now, at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Green to come in and talk about our safety protocols. And I apologize for, maybe it's a little blurry, but I'll pass this out. Every one of our classrooms and every one of our buildings has that poster.
That poster was developed with a group, first of all, my name's Gary Green. I work with the corporation in area school safety attendance and homeless families, McKinney Vento. What you're looking at is kind of a second generation. This is the old flip chart that we used to have in all of our classrooms. Those flip charts were occurrence-based. You know, we had all things listed on there, suicide and things like that. So when you had an occurrence, you went through and said, okay, what should we do? This is response-based. This is based on a group of people from Colorado. One of the individuals that kind of heads that group up lost a daughter at Platte Canyon in a school shooting and he has received funding and trades throughout the country and throughout the world. So this is a response-based, a little bit more intuitive when we start looking at it. You know, we have the report part of it. For example, if, well, I'll just use this analogy. Let's say, for example, that if someone thinks they smell gas in the building, they would report that. Then if that gas is present, we would maybe move to shelter in another part of the building where it's not, or we might go into the evacuation of the building outside. So we have those kind of individuals through that. I use that as to show you that it's not fluid. We move from one step to the other. But what you do see is two constant steps. One of those is the fire. We evacuate using our fire exits. And we also have what we call our lockdown. Part of the United States Department of Education, when they first developed guidance for safety planning, they talked about mitigating problems. You know, whether it's a tornado, an earthquake, you don't have that. That's a disaster. But you do have man-made disasters, bomb threats, school shootings. We certainly had a rash of those. And part of our ability and part of what we do to mitigate that is we call lockdown. We use a technique that we walk into schools. We have a lot of variations. We walk into the schools, some are unique, some of the doors, some of this, some of that. I don't want to go into major detail, but we use that basic avoid, deny, defend in all of our schools, but it's a little bit different in every one of the school. That's to mitigate that. And when you look at that type of lockdown configuration, there's one goal in mind, is that if somebody's in the building, you want to eliminate the number of targets that person can harm until the police arrive and eliminate that person, normally three to five minutes in that time event. So this chart reflects a little bit more of response type of thing. We have what teachers need to do. Our administrators will say, at this time, we're going to shelter in place. We have an individual roaming the neighborhood, just as we had the other day in some of our schools. We're going to shelter in place. Maybe we have a student passed out in the hallway. We're going to shelter in place until further notice we have a medical emergency. Then staff, and then we also have the student's response. Primarily in all our schools, the student's response is listen to instructions, listen to those in control. So that's kind of how that chart flows. Behind each one of those, we talk about at the top of that, there it is, what Chad said. We've got elaborate plans for suicide, communication, and everything else. But this represents what's in the teachers' classrooms and it is in our hallways.
Excuse me, Ms. Green, could I ask a question here?
Yes.
Under your bullying, you know, I looked at that, what would constitute, does that have to just be one student? You know, we received a letter last year, I think, where if a student was, there was a student that was sitting in one chair and picking at everyone that sit in the chair ahead. So wouldn't that be constitute bullying regardless? You know, I think sometimes we look at, it has to be the same person, but in that situation, wouldn't that qualify as bullying? Other students, you know, on a larger level?
Not known fullback pattern, but here's kind of, here's kind of a real, you know, if I shove you down, that's not bullying. That's something Kevin needs to deal with out there. But if I keep picking on you day after day after day, that constant thing, then I'm bullying you. But you, as a victim, could have this person pick on you, this person pick on you, this person pick on you. And essentially, even though it's not the same person, you're still being bullied. There was a real good example that occurred out of New Zealand a few years backward. Big old kid got tired, getting picked on, picked up, slammed that kid to the ground. Yeah, he did bullying. So when you talk about that bullying, that's that repeated effort to exert control on that individual.
Okay, but in, and I'm going to quote up maybe our policy in some of the schools, if a student did that, then he would also be suspended because he exercised violence himself.
Exactly. That's correct. Retaliation is not self-defense.
So if that student had reported that to the adults, staff, and nothing happened and he did that, why would that student be punished at that point because now he's trying to defend himself? And I know some teachers have probably been in that situation, that they've reported, but nothing was basically done at the office.
The ideal saying, Dr. Clayton, is every time a student reports, you should have documentation of an investigation. There should be some result from that investigation, whether it's just a warning, some type of suspension like that. Obviously, you and I both been in situations where retired people picking on us and retaliating. And in essence, it's not self-defense. It helps explain that behavior, but it doesn't excuse it, if that makes any sense.
Not really, but thank you very much.
What constitutes this situation where self-defense would be, would be adjudged against the person or for the person that committed the action?
Self-defense.
Do we have that defined in our policies or do we have?
I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware if there's a self-defense component in that policy.
Yes, Ms. Piper.
You go by the definition of bullying and that means that someone, yeah, and that means that someone is doing an act to another person, is intentional, is on purpose, it's repeated, and there's an imbalance of power. And the person that's being done to has a hard time defending him or herself. So if they have retaliated back, clearly, they're not having a hard time defending themselves. So the right act is to let someone have already know and then we take that upon ourselves to investigate that and mediate that so that it doesn't happen. If they followed the red protocols and let us know, but in one situation, that's not bullying because it's not repeated, it's not on purpose. I mean, that's just violating our handbook of safety laws, behavior codes. So we do handle that individually, but it needs to meet that state definition of bullying.
Okay. Surveillance.
Yeah, just a little bit. Part of our mitigation, when you look at this, it's prevention mitigation. Part of our prevention is we have video surveillance in our schools. We have intrusion devices in our schools. We have, you know, fire alarms. We have all those things that we have to prevent man-made or natural disaster. We have structures reinforced. We have backup generators in case we lose lights, those kind of things like that. But from the findings coming out of the Stoneman Douglas shooting of last school year was a very good example, when you watch on TV, of the dysfunction of an operable video system. And there's a 30-minute delay. Police were looking for the shooter and he was down at Subway or McDonald's drinking a Coke. So the recommendation out of that is, is that you should have active video surveillance system and it should be shared with the first responders in the area so they can respond in real time. We are working towards that in our various schools. We're improving that. I really don't want to go in depth on a lot of our needs, but there's a lot of things that we need to do to kind of keep looking for that. So when we look at our plan, we're never satisfied with it. When we look at our policies, we're always looking for the next thing. For example, Teresa Stengel, our school nurse is part of the safety committee. We're now looking into getting our school people trained in a program called Stop the Bleed. We will now outfit our schools with tourniquets based upon the shootings down in Florida, based upon the shooting of Columbine where the teacher bled out. We will equip our schools with tourniquets if need be. That helps mitigate that. So, you know, we're bringing that, Teresa's bringing that in to kind of train our staff just as we were all trained in CPR, just as we're all trained in the Heimlich maneuver. It's just one more tool that we hope we never have to use, but given the current events that we see today, it's better to be prepared than not.
So is that, excuse me, is that ongoing training? When I say ongoing for CPR, what is it? You have to refresh every, what, two years?
Every two years.
Okay, so we're keeping a log so that the teachers are rescheduling on it? Okay.
And the Stop the Bleed training is about a 15-minute training to use that tourniquet. And those will be in all of our AEDs as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question about stopping bleeding. There's chemicals product, there are chemical products for stopping bleeding also. There are chemical products for stopping bleeding also. Are we, are we planning on implementing any of that? And that would probably have to be the, to the nurses' question.
Well, the kit I have, I've got a train on it. The kit I have has a tourniquet on it, a very good tourniquet, it's a CAT 6 tourniquet, it's the one that has the windlass on it.
Right.
Also, it has what they call Israeli dressing. It has absorbent dressing on it. It has the opportunity for a plastic bag to be used as a chest.
Chest wound.
Chest, and then also it has a compression gauze, you know, the only idea that you can stop that bleed. So when we talk about chemicals, some of the stuff where, you know, they sprinkle a powder in there and things like that, that's not present in the kit I have. I actually have two of them. It's not present in either one of the kit because there is some adverse reaction. I'm not a medical person, but they tell me that dehydration is very possible with some of those chemicals. But we do have those Israeli dressings and those things present.
Okay. And then in conclusion, the last page of the slide, the last PowerPoint slide, is our threat assessment template. And that's, that's something that's very, very important as we wrap up here this evening. When I look at our overall comprehensive safety plan and I look at some of the things that we've touched on a few different times here this evening, that's one of the most important things we can do. You know, I started and led with see something, say something, and how vital and important our staff members and our students are when they do see something and in fact say something. We have countless processes and protocols. We have reporting guidelines. We have reporting documentation. When we do see that there is a threat, whether it be direct threat, indirect threat, a veiled threat, or confidential, or a conditional threat, and that could be with a student and/or a staff member, if we have that threat, not only are we trained now to document that and investigate that fully, but you can't just drop an email to another agent or another agency. You have to make sure that we cycle back around and we follow up with that because I think oftentimes, we saw that at Stoneman Douglas, everyone knew. Matter of fact, when he got out of the Uber ride carrying a Cabela's rifle bag, a couple of the, they weren't SROs, but a couple of the coaches that were being used as monitors around the campus, there was 12 buildings on that campus, they referred to him as crazy boy, crazy boys on campus. But that didn't trump anybody to take action. So when we have a threat, it's not, it's not good enough to just identify that. We certainly have to take that all the way through and we have to make sure that we vet that with the other agencies and the other officials. And then we cycle back and make sure that no one has slipped through the cracks.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Any other questions, comments, Board?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. I know we've had some, some issues with some cyber bullying and some cyber threats and I just want to compliment you guys and, and our officers and our sheriff's department on the quickness that I've seen. I'm amazed that it can be done that quickly and I appreciate that and I know all our parents.
Absolutely. I think that speaks to the level of training that our SROs and our police officers receive too, very quickly and at 3:00 AM.
Yes.
They're not, they're not indoors and it assures that we're not going to have a problem at school. Kevin is here and I just want to kind of say that, you know, part of what we do in the summer, we'll cooperate with Jeff PD, various other agencies, we'll provide them access to our schools. Last year with Rusty Settles, Lieutenant Settles and Major Lynch and Kevin, we also included staff. They're not going to get shot. They're there as spectators. We don't want to shoot staff. We wanted to give them the feel of how that looks. I think that sets aside what the legislature did. But, you know, we were at Charlestown High School and they were shooting a gun down the hallway. It was, it was an extra loud gun is what they used to train the dogs with. And it became very obvious that we wouldn't know where that's at. You know, I mean, the way the building is shaped, even at Jeff High School, even at Parkland where we trained at, even at New Washington we trained at, we constantly said, okay, so this is an hammer revolving thing. 10 years ago, they used to come in, okay, we've got to wait till this team, we've got to wait till this team. Now these officers are trained in single officer response. They'll come in the building, whether they're SRO or they're coming in off the street, prepared to engage. We are in the process with our avoid, deny, defend to prepare staff for that encounter and to minimize any kind of injuries.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Gary, are there any funds out there for, you know, when a shot goes off, that it's detected in a building, you know?
There's technology that is available, whether we have the funds or not. I don't think we.
We do not. No, I'm just kidding.
No, we don't have funds.
No, really, we don't.
But there is technology and it works off of three different variables. Some of them work off the flash of the firearm. Some of them work off the noise of the firearm. And some of them work off of the concussion of the firearm. So, you know, if a pallet falls over, bang, you think, okay, wait a minute. If that's a noise type of device, it's, okay, now we have to have to shoot again. So, you know, what they're saying now technically, you want the ones that work off the noise and the pressure. You put them about every 25 to 50 feet down the hallway, depending on that. And they'll detect everything from a 22, which is what the kid in Noblesville used, up to any kind of rifle you want. That technology is out there, matter of fact, that technology is out there to tape that shot detector and tie it to our video camera. So when these guys respond, they've got something, they come up, they can punch the button and they can say, wait a minute, this is a shot detector. This camera's here, this camera's here, this camera's here. And what we're trying to do as a matter of practice is all of our hallways have names that we're trying to put the camera where at least they can see that hallway. One of the recommendations Chad and I, we all attended a safety conference, is that we need to put the numbers on the exterior of the building, on the windows of the classroom. Something very simple, but what happened was a shooting in Noblesville was in the 600 range and responding officers, there was 250 of them, as they arrived on the scene, they thought, okay, I'm going to see six floors. So from that recommendation from Parkland, they're saying, hey, let's put those numbers on the doors. That way, when police officers are inside, you know, they eliminated that threat. They can say, hey, I'm in room 203, 823, and then from the outside, they can identify that where that's at. Just as we've numbered our doors with police, their suggestion now is that we number our windows so they're visible from the ground, whether on the first floor or second floor, to help assist. range and responding officers, there was 250 of them, as they arrived on the scene, they thought, okay, I'm going to see six floors. So from that recommendation from Parkland, they're saying, hey, let's put those numbers on the doors. That way when police officers are inside, you know, they eliminated that threat. They can say, hey, I'm in room 203, 823, and then from the outside, they can identify that where that's at. Just as we've numbered our doors with police, their suggestion now is that we number our windows so they're visible from the ground, whether on the first floor or second floor, to help assist in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gilke has a question.
I just had a question for Mr. Lochner. So in your first four months in working with the safety committee, what would you say is the biggest thing you've garnered as a difference from being at the building level to the district level?
Well, I think at the district level, just the detail in terms of, just yesterday we had a meeting of our committee, you know, and looking at, you know, what needs to take place at each building, you know, and just, you know, on the evacuations, where do they go? And then also the legwork that goes into that in terms of contacting those facilities or those businesses and trying to make sure that, you know, number one, we have a key. Number one, we have a phone, or number two, we have a phone number and, you know, just working through those things. There's a lot more that goes into it than, you know, just what you see on the outside looking in, you know, that, just to create meeting points, you know, for an evacuation is, there's a lot of detail that goes into that. So, I mean, that's probably the thing that's really caught my attention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and it takes time, I mean, to plan it out and try to do it right.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Next is eLearning presentation by Ms. Piper.
Well, I have more of an update than a presentation for you.
Fantastic, I like updates.
2.5 minutes.
Oh, yes.
Here we go. So in 2017-18, so just a quick update, when John was our president of our association and the representatives that were on court discussions at the time, kind of challenged us as an admin team to begin an investigation to see if eLearning might be something that Greater Clark would be interested in implementing. So this year, as Mr. Felix and the representatives this year in court discussions, as well as our cabinet members and our admin council, kind of went on a year-long plan of doing proper investigation to be making those decisions. And we started with an old-fashioned teacher tool called a KWL chart. And so we just went through month-by-month process of listing first, what do we know about eLearning just as a district and admin council and cabinet? And we got all those things together. Capcho, some of these people out here can already do, tell everybody exactly what we did also. The next month we got together, we wanted to make a list of what we needed to know. If we were going to make an informed decision, what do we need to know? And then lastly, we took what we needed to know and contacted several school districts and Five Star, had Five Star tell us the answers to as many of those as we possibly could get, and then, and did two different school districts, did a phone conference and then posed those same questions to them. So we had really three different opportunities to hear what those districts were doing with our particular questions that we culminated through the what we needed to know. That culminated then at our last month's meeting, deciding that we would make a recommendation to move forward with eLearning with that group having interest in, and also our board having interest in us becoming an eLearning district. And so at this time, the academic team has put forth kind of a skeleton of what that would look like between now and December and then prepping us to have a spring semester rollout for a potential inclement day, inclement weather day. The committee, we have a committee formed now that will have representatives from our teachers' association and then different admin stakeholder groups, other people that would be associated with making those decisions. And now we'll be going through each of those same questions and instead of figuring out what Five Star said or what district or that district said, what our decisions will be. So there's a series of multiple committee meetings over the next three months. We will come back together with you in like June-ish or July, one, depending on how far along that committee gets, with a more specific plan for you to approve. But right now, that's just a quick update.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have any data from any of these schools? I'm sure if you do, you'll be sharing it about success with the eLearning on these days. I mean, there were some of our school corporations in the state and other states, they've missed several days of instruction and I think we all agree there's, there's nothing that can replace a student in a classroom with a teacher, period. But are there any negatives or positives?
Well, that would depend on which district you ask and what they have chosen to do to roll out.
Okay.
Because some districts choose to make it a, an eLearning week window. Some choose to make it a 48-hour window. Some choose to make the assignments given and do the same day.
Okay.
So it, all those pieces of data would vary depending on what their plan has been.
I do know that we looked at attendance data, especially when you add like the Monday and Tuesday of that first week of spring break, the intercession. I know that one building's attendance was like 75%. I mean, like a quarter of their kids were absent, nobody comes. But on eLearning days in one district, they had 98% attendance for those eLearning days. And then, you know, it's different.
Depends on how you choose to count.
To count attendance.
It can be counted.
But there's lots of different things that you can do to support people who don't. And it's not an eLearning day as so much as like virtual learning, like learning at home. There's lots of different things. People, I think, pigeonhole it to be like, oh, I have to have internet and that's not exactly what it is.
Not necessarily.
It's just a continuation of instruction.
And I think it differs between, you know, if they send out a survey and the, I mean, every district should do continuous improvement and every time they get through a year with that or even, even one first day under your belt, send out a survey, get those back, see what adjustments need to be made. So you're not continuing to do something that isn't popular with your stakeholder group, whether it be the teachers or the parents or whatever. But you've got, everyone has a different scenario. So, you know, a parent of one high school student may have one perception of eLearning and a single mom with three kids under the age of 12 might have a totally different perception of eLearning. So, I mean, to really say, here's exactly what, what they've gathered for data, I think just really depends on all scenarios involved. But the key is just to make sure that it is well-planned, well-thought-out and has a great FAQ already established so that any question that comes in is going to be answered consistently among every single school.
Thank you.
During our corporation discussion meetings, we heard from people from Evansville and then people from Jennings County, you know, and I would say overall, you know, their response to what they have done with eLearning days was very positive. Now, there were obviously some challenges, you know, especially that first year rolling it out in terms of, that you have to work through, but overall, they had very positive things to say about it. One, Jennings County was more structured probably in terms of how they laid it out and rolled it out versus Evansville, you know, so I, I think we've picked up on that, that we'd be wise to really put some structure and planning into it.
Okay.
Before we jump into it so that, so that we have less issues or hiccups, you know, once we get it started.
Thank you.
Or use that first eLearning day.
And I would say that the plan was for us to make an effort at second semester as in our first inclement weather opportunity, but obviously this committee getting together and really working through things is going to help us understand if that is reasonable, if that's a reasonable timeline.
Thank you. All right, next is the fund monitoring report, Dr. Deichel.
Hello, Mark.
Hi.
First up is the education fund. In April, we collected 5.7 million. We spent 4.9. I was happy. We spent less than what we got in. One of the things that I want to draw your attention to is we have not made a transfer of money since March. Remember, all the money comes into the education fund now, which is the old general fund, and then periodically I'm supposed to transfer money over to the operation fund to pay for certain account numbers that were like custodial maintenance, everybody in central office, those are all now part of the operation fund. So the 527,000, or 552,000 I'm showing at the end of the year, that'll go up or down. I'll get you a better number once we get into the next school year and we get rid of all the people that have retired, resigned, whatever, and then we bring in the new people and then that'll set my budget for the next year. So that number will adjust. In the debt service, no activity in the month of April. We're showing 5,697 and I'll need all that for payments in May and June. In the, they're not loading. Are you serious? Oh, geez.
We'd just like to hear your voice. You can just continue talking.
All right. In the pension debt fund, no activity in the month of April, 552,000 is the end of the year and all the payments will come out in June and December. In the operation fund, in April, we collected 81,000 and basically that's the local option income tax for about 68,000 was the majority of that and the rest was extra curricular and things of that nature. So we collected 81,000, we spent 1,606,000. We're actually, at the end of April, 285,000 in the hole. So what I'm doing now is I'm slowing down Duke Energy bills to make sure I have enough money because remember, this fund comes partially from the education fund, but mainly it's from property bank excise taxes. I'll get those at the beginning of June. So then my cash balance will go back up. So right now I'm projecting 318,000 as the ending cash balance, but I wouldn't hold my breath on that. Just depends on how bad our weather is. And then also, don't forget, our tax caps jumped from 2.2 million to 4.2 million. So that's all going to hit the operation fund too. So I'm sweating a little bit in the operation fund. And then in the rainy day fund, we're sitting with 3,599,779 and there's been no activity. So, any questions? I'm sorry, I apologize for not being loaded. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Bill?
If we, if we hold a utility payment to whatever utility, are we, are, I mean, if I hold a utility payment, I'm deemed with a, you know, extra charge. Are we having to absorb that or do they work with us on it?
No, they can't, they can't, they can't cut off power to a public school. Up north, we did that for two and a half years, didn't pay NIPSCO. They were happy when they finally got their check, but.
Do they charge us extra for it, a penalty?
No, there's no late charge. We don't pay those anyways. So.
I like that.
You can't do that, but I can. Any other questions? Nope.
Thank you, Dr. Deichel. All right, next is a student clinic update by Teresa Stengel. And is Deanna Wright here too or no?
She was not able to attend.
Oh, actually, I've never met her, so I don't know if it's a bad thing or not.
She's a great person. I'm Teresa Stengel, the health services supervisor for Greater Clark. And I oversee the student health needs, the health offices and the health services staff. And part of my job duties is also overseeing the student health clinics. And I'm not sure if everyone is aware of kind of the history of the student health clinics. I thought I would cover that just briefly. In 2014, we decided that we need, would like to provide the students of Greater Clark County Schools with another level of care. So we partnered with Clark Memorial and Clark Physicians Group to offer nurse practitioners into our buildings at Jeffersonville High School and Charlestown High School. So they had a clinic within our clinics there at both of those schools and they were able to see students for limited services for acute care there in those two buildings. And they would see any Greater Clark County student and that was all free of charge. So to progress on that went fairly well. We were seeing students, we were able to provide care to those students, we were able to get those students back to class as soon as we could and back to school. This past summer, we started talking about a transition of those services. So we changed up the agreements that we had and we were no longer in an agreement with Clark Memorial and Clark Physicians Group, but we obtained an agreement with Wellness for Life, who runs our, our employee health clinic, sorry. And that partnership transitioned into services continuing for our students, but on a different level. So now, instead of the nurse practitioners being in those buildings, we offer services through telemedicine. And so it's a virtual visit. And what happens are the students come in for the same reasons, you know, sore throat, different things. They come in and they're triaged through the health services staff and they're taken into the clinic and we Skype, Zoom, however you want to say it, with our nurse practitioner, who is Deanna Wright, who was one of the previous nurse practitioners that saw the students at Charlestown High School and Wellness for Life actually hired her to continue seeing our students, so she was familiar with them. So the equipment is very high-tech and they come in and we ping Deanna. We have a specialized stethoscope that we can use for the students that we can turn on to Bluetooth. We can listen and hear the students lung sounds, heart sounds. But Deanna, on the other side of that, in her office at the Wellness for Life clinic, she can also hear. She can see through the monitor we have in, so where she can see the students, the parents, whoever's there with us. She can hear what we're hearing. She can direct us to say, let me hear that right sound again, or let me hear the lung sounds from the back. So she directs us in that. We also have a specialized otoscope that works in a similar way, that has a camera on the end. So the student comes in with an earring, we can put the otoscope in just like, you know, you would at the doctor's office, but it has a camera on the end. So then therefore, Deanna can see on the other end in her office what's going on inside the ear. Then we have a derm camera also for like skin problems, maybe if there's a laceration, a cut or something, the camera, it takes real vivid photos. Sometimes we'll even use it to look at the student's throat. If they're complaining of a sore throat, we'll hold the camera up so she can see the throat. So we go through these processes and then the student can receive care based on the nurse practitioner's diagnosis. And so the analysis that you see, you can, I didn't capture the April numbers just yet. I'll be back later on this summer to talk more about student health. But these are just some of the numbers. You know, we started out really slow. This started in November. We didn't really get started on it until end of November. We had some practices we had to go through and some training for our staff we had to also go through. In December, Jeffersonville High School did see some students, Charlestown not as much because we were having some technical issues with the equipment. So we got all that going later in January, February and March. So total, we've seen in those months, January through March is what I focused on. We saw 161 students. So that was a pretty good number. The biggest complaint with kids is sore throat. And so we saw a lot of kids with sore throat. We're able to do a strep screen in the office and out of 78 strep screens, there was 22 positives. So those 22 kids were able to come in, have their visit, get their medicine, and then of course, we send them home, but then they're able to come back quicker the next day, you know, than what they would if they were holding off and not seeing someone for their symptoms. That was just at Charlestown, I mean, at Jeff, at Charlestown, we had six positives. We were also able to test for the flu and I have some numbers on the flu. We saw 33 kids for flu, or tested for flu and six were positive at Jeff and 19 were tested and five were positive at Charlestown. The common complaint, sore throat, they come in for fever, they come in for cough, ear aches, nausea, just, you know, any of those acute things that you would go to your doctor or to the little clinic or whatever to go to. Just some comparison there at the bottom. It's not as accurate of a comparison because you have to think that we went from two nurse practitioners, one in each building, and now we have one practitioner. So all the students are limited on the visits because we still schedule visits and so we're in half, our visits are cut in half. The availability of visits for the calendar, because we have a calendar that we go by and if Jeff High already has a student being seen at 10, then Charlestown can't schedule a student at 10, if that makes sense. But if you look at the numbers and say you cut those numbers, the 2017 numbers, those months they saw 376, which was about seven and a half students a day. Then in 2018, that increased to 410, which was about, still about eight students per day.
Renee, can you move that up so we can see that?
Oh, sorry, yeah, it's kind of in the, there you go. And then, then this year we saw 161 students, which was about three students per day. So not, not quite half, but we're getting there. We did have to have brand-new consent forms. The parents were used to doing the consent forms with online registration. With the transition in November, we had to have paper consents and that kind of, you know, had some parents that didn't really want to come in and fill out the consent forms again, but they're on online registration now for next year.
Good.
Teresa, on the unreported, is that something confidential or you just missed? I mean, somebody just missed taking that information?
Right, yeah. And we have our little log where we schedule students and there were some that just had the student's name and what time their appointment was. It didn't necessarily report what their complaint was.
Got you.
Now, the nurse practitioner does fill out a summary, just like you would get at the doctor's office for each of the students. We do have that filed and she also has that filed. So if we needed to, we could go back and find that information.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, so there is a cost to the corporation for this?
Comes through, they've not met through Wellness for Life.
Does, is that...
What happened, Mr. Hawkins, is we were paying approximately $125,000, no, $160,000 a year to Clark Memorial Hospital, to nurse practitioners.
Right.
Then we made an agreement with Wellness for Life. They would donate any kind of contribution, become a sponsor or, what's it called, a pathway sponsor for our academy.
Yes, sir.
So, the equipment costs like $20,000. So, that's our in-kind contribution. So, there is no actual cash donating, so we actually saved $163,000 to our general fund at that time.
My second question would be, and you, you may be needing, we're the one to answer it. I'm assuming that some of these students are probably in the, in the, I would call the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. They're, they're in a lower socioeconomic status, and they may be eligible for help from the government. Are we able to recoup any cost as, for instance, if I, if I take my grandson to the medical, I mean, to a doctor, and they happen to be on government assistance, the doctor's going to get some reimbursement for that? Are we able to do that?
No.
Okay. Is that, is our reason, we just don't do it or we can't do it?
It's a paper nightmare for us to do that. We're not, we're not equipped to bill the federal government for any of that information. So, that's another concern.
Do we have an idea how deep, I mean, how, how much that would reimburse us? In other words, how much are we not billing for that we could bill for? Or do we know? Is there any way to even find out?
Got it.
There's no cost to us for the student to do now.
Right.
Because even like the labs, those are all picked up by Wellness for Life.
I mean, I'll be real, I'll be real blunt. I'm looking at it as a profit center.
Yeah.
So, if we make any money off of it, I'd like to do that. But if it's cost more than it'd be worth, it's not worth it, obviously. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Anybody else?
Thank you, Ms. Stingle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Just kidding. That was from Sesame Street. Six things on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, Board?
Madam President. Yes, ma'am. I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Questions or comments, discussion on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Could we discuss the personnel, other job description? I don't, I did not see that when I was going through the agenda, and so, I'm not clear what that, what that is.
The numbers...
The academy interventionist position. Basically, it's something that we want to do to support our academies at the high school level. One of the things that we've noted in our travels to Nashville, in our travels to Lexington and Bryan Station High School, they had those in place. We, we want that to be equivalent to, it'll be paid a little bit more than what a para makes. We're looking at $16 an hour. But, but they'll be tracking students in terms of making sure they're on track for graduation requirements, attendance, credit recovery, if that's needed. You know, we're, these positions will come out of cost savings elsewhere in terms of what we're doing with the alternative program, and also what we're doing in a couple of other areas in terms of gaining some cost savings. So, it's not an add at all in terms of additional cost. But we do feel like we need this component of our academy model to really provide that intervention piece to help each academy, whether it be at Jeff High or Charlestown High or at New Washington.
Would, would that be one person to each one of the high schools or one person that would roam between high schools?
Well, at Jeff High, it'll be one person just for the freshman academy, because one of our accountability measures from the state is they track us on how many freshmen are on track for graduation by the end of their freshman year. And then the, the other one will be for grades 10, 11 and 12 at Jeff High. And then Charlestown High will just have one, and New Wash High will have one. You know, but it's really about making sure that we're tracking those students, making sure that they're staying on track to graduate.
Can you help me understand, like, that's typically been the responsibility of a guidance counselor. So, what's the difference? Or how does that alleviate the guidance counselors to do something else?
Really, the game has changed in terms of what a guidance counselor does in today's world because of the testing component, whether it be ILEARN, ISTEPP, you know, whether it be ACT testing. The other thing that the counselors are now picking up is that they have to track every high school student on this graduation pathway model, you know, and to make sure that they've taken the CTE courses that, that they have to take to graduate, or they've passed, you know, or got a passing score on the ASVAB test or the ISTEPP test. Counselors, I mean, they're, they're just overwhelmed with what they're dealing with in terms of testing and grad pathways.
There's plan, there's ACT, there's ILEARN, there's...
Well, but you said it's freshmen, correct?
No, it'd be nine through 12 in terms of what, like, at Jeff High, there would be one interventionist that would take care of the freshman academy teams, and then there would be one interventionist that takes care of grades 10 through 12. Yeah, it's something that we've seen as we've visited other school systems that do the academy model, and they've had positive things to say about having that person in place that really takes care of those type of issues in terms of keeping kids on track, attendance, behavior, just making sure they're there for that support to make sure students are progressing the way they should.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments, please?
No, the only thing I would say, Ms. Lofner, is that what I heard you say, I'm just going to pick out, is that the plan is to make some different changes later on, that this will be no increase for...
Right.
Administration or anything.
Right.
But it will assist the schools in doing what they need to do to meet state guidelines, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, do the interventionists report to the assistant principal, principal of that academy?
They would report most directly to that team, like the freshman academies. But, but yes, overall, they would report back to that principal of that school or that academy, you know? Like, the one at Charlestown would report back to that principal. The one, the two at New, or at Jeffersonville, you know, ultimately would report to those academy principals, you know? And they would help, you know, with those academies and work with those principals.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, and thank you, Ms. Gokey, for your questions. Any other questions or comments, please? All right. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as submitted and signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Next is Gifts to Buildings.
Okay. This month, we have a total of $2,295 in Gifts to, Gifts to Buildings. Noticing in my district, oh, no, not my district, I'm sorry. We have them for several different schools, Charlestown, New Wash, Parkview, Spring Hill and Wilson, and for athletics, for band, for classroom seating and for ECA. I would like to move that we accept Gifts to Buildings as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Questions or comments, please?
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the bouncing around program?
Well, it is, so, it, what it looks like...
It's at the elementary school, so I'm assuming...
Yeah.
It's a stable ball. It's one of those great, is it one of those big balls?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess it's for kids...
Dr. Hartledge.
I believe it's the flexible seating that they have applied for. Wilson has several classrooms with students who have various needs.
Okay.
It helps them. They're kind of balls that, they look like balls, and it's a chair that they sit on.
Okay.
And I believe that that was, isn't that a, 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 a,
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of accepting the Gifts to Building as submitted and read by the wonderful Mrs. Patrick, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Fantastic. Action items, there are none. You're welcome. Public items or non-consensual items, there are none. Reports, requests and board's comments, Ms. Gilkey.
I just, my, my personal feeling, I'm surprised that during the public hearing, we didn't like go through the contract, like...
That wasn't in my script.
Highlight the details.
It was on the website.
I think that would have been beneficial for our public. And then the second thing, I just, I'll apologize for voting nay on the job description. I just did not have any information about what that was. So future reference, if that's something maybe you could put in your weekly report so that prior to, you know, having to vote on it, we would have more information, how you plan to fund it, things like that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. Mrs. Patrick?
Oh, we're going out of order.
Oh, just kidding, sorry, someone was bothering me. Ms. Perkins?
Yes, I have a few things. First of all, Parkwood had their 50th celebration and some of us attended and it was quite lovely. I appreciated that. We were named an outstanding board at our regional meeting and I think we should congratulate ourselves for that. I've given the plaque to, or the little thing to Renee for our plaque. Tomorrow is my good friend and fellow board member's birthday, Christina Gilkey. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I know how old she is, but anyway.
Of course.
And, and very sad, I know that we are, some of our families were touched by the explosion on Sunday. And I know, I believe one of our students was actually injured, collarbone break or something. And I just want us to continue to keep those people, I understand there's like eight or nine houses that are...
Eight are condemned right now.
Condemned.
Yes.
And, and of course, somebody lost their lives, life and, and another person is in a burn unit and is very bad off. So let's just keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
Yes.
At that...
I would like to, concerning the telemed, I know that whenever that change was made last year, I had some people that were contacting me, of course, it was before, before we were on board. But I had some people contending that it was a problem or they saw it as an issue. And I don't, and, but I wondered if we have made any efforts to try to explain to the parents what the advantages of it are and how well it does work. I mean, it's just a public relation thing and you don't have to answer, but I mean, it's just a suggestion that maybe we promote what we're doing good.
We've actually been discussing making a video of like a walk visit. But not one signed into the parents.
That would be good.
Because they do not have a total understanding of what the process is. We have sent home information, sent information on social media, on the site about it, but seeing it definitely isn't...
Yeah, it might, I don't know.
A commercial would be awesome.
Might have a lot of interest.
It's gotta be good, because Dr. Phil's doing it. I mean, he's got it, you know, doctors on demand, so it's gotta be good.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Anything else? Mr. Buckwalter?
Yeah, I just want to thank John and Mark Felix first and foremost for, you know, getting the teachers' pulse a little bit about the new superintendent and how that's going. I appreciate that, it's hard, you know, you'd like to know those things and I appreciate that very much. I also want to thank Mr. Green and Mr. Schenk for the safety update and where we are with that. That's first and foremost a huge ordeal and it's, you know, you can never be comfortable enough. And every time we turn on TV, we're frightened when we see something crazy. So I just appreciate the work that you gentlemen do with that. Also, I want to thank Tom, because I know you get up here sometimes and you have to deliver information that's not probably what you'd like to leave the house and think, well, I'm gonna go tell them we just got a grant for a million bucks. But thanks for just being positive with that and, and working real hard to help us, you know, regain our financial footing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckwalter.
I also wanted to compliment Tom on when he said he was happy that he didn't have to transfer. So be happy, make me happy. I'd like to recognize as a master school board, Teresa didn't say anything about herself, but I understand that, but at the meeting, she was recognized as a master school board member.
Thank you.
For her years in service.
The highest level.
The highest level, yes. The only one that got us a...
Comes with age.
I would like to say something, it was a tragedy on the situation over on Assembly. I thought my wife was crazy, because I go into a deep sleep and she woke up at about 4:30 saying something exploded in the house. And I'm running through the house half crazy, nothing exploded, there must have been a truck going by. And I'm sort of surprised that we heard that.
It was heard in, it was heard in Goshen, Kentucky.
My goodness.
Nine miles away.
But after church, she, Bill Holter, we met him and he was telling there was explosion. And we went to see. I'm thinking, wow, you know, so you never can say someone's out of their mind or they woke up from a mad dream, you know, so. But our condolences go to the, the loss in, in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes, I had an opportunity to also go with Milt, John and Teresa to the School Board Association Regional Meeting. And that was very informative, especially on the recent legislation, bringing it down to our level, you know, that we could understand how it went through that Senate or what, what was added, what was subtracted, what bills died. So that was, that was quite informative. Also, I went to the eLearning Day, which again, I mean, I don't have anything to add to what Dr. Pfeiffer said, but it seems like there were several school, schools represented. And it does look very specific. You know, you, you find out what works for you and you plan it well and, and then, you know, you make those changes when, when you need to. So quite a bit of learning that I've been able to be a part of to hopefully help me be a better school board member. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Thank you for those who spoke tonight. Thank you for those who came. Thank you, those who reached out about the contract. We did not go over it. That's just not something that we normally do in a public hearing. And public hearings are scheduled for five minutes. It was posted online. If you guys have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to me or to April about the contract. But I appreciate you guys being here. And I mean, for as much as we had, it is 8:09, so. Do you have anything, Mr. Lofner?
Just real quick, I want to thank John and Mark for the kind words and also for the teachers to come tonight. I appreciate that support. I want to thank Gary Green and Chad Schenk. Also, one other person that didn't attend tonight that's really been heavily involved in the district safety plan is April Holder, who's the principal at Wilson Elementary. She's been very involved and has done a great job in really onboarding me and getting me involved in these district-level meetings and trying to put it together. And it's a lot, it is a lot of work, you know, to put a district plan together. The amount of detail is, is huge. So thank you.
Thank you. What's the difference between, or how can you tell the difference between an alligator and a crocodile? Because one you'll see, oh, after a while, but one you see later. I kind of messed it up, I'm not ready to give it. That could, that could have gone smoother, but you know what? It is what it is. Today is National Server Day, so if you guys go out to celebrate what an awesome board meeting this was, please tip your servers. I'd like to have in the, the thing you give when you want to get out of here.
Motion.
A motion for the chairman, please.
Move to adjourn.
Not everybody, Craig, I'm not... Dr. Clayton, thank you. Second, Mr. Hawkins, all those proof, say aye. All those aye and not, or crazy. Have a good night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.